I'd like to call the order of the 1,437th meeting of the President and Board of Trustees for Machesney Park on this 20th day of November 2017. Please rise for invocation given by this evening by our village clerk, Lori Mitchell, and please remain, please stand for the pledge allegiance led by trustee Schmidt.
Let us pray. God of all blessings, source of life, giver of all grace, we thank you for setting us here in Machesney Park, for families who nurture us, for friends who love us by choice, for companions at work who share our burdens and daily tasks, for strangers who welcome us into their midst. We thank you for this day, for life, and one more day to love, for opportunity, and one more day to work for justice and peace, for neighbors and one more person to love and by whom to be loved, for your grace and one more experience of your presence, for your promise to be with us, and for our God. For these things and all blessings, this Thanksgiving week, we give you our gratitude through Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please take roll?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Sykes.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck is absent. Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
We have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 6th board meeting.
So made.
Second?
The motion is second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Well, next have the treasury report from village administrator, Tim Savage.
Thank you. The treasury's report as of November 13th, 2017 reflects a total of all funds to be $10,394,924.86. A copy of the report is available at the back table. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to accept the treasury's report?
So made. Second.
The motion is second. All there in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasury's report has been approved. Next we'll have communication from clerk Lori Mitchell.
Thank you, your honor. A couple of things this evening. First of all, Eric Beck isn't here tonight. He's still ill, but we do want to extend condolences to his family on the death of his brother Marty. He passed away last weekend, and his funeral will be here in town this coming weekend. And second, this evening, I know how modest she is, so I'm going to take the liberty of reporting tonight about our student liaison, Tamara Hecox. She was honored with other students last week during the Fall Sports Award at Harlem High School. Tamara was a member of the varsity tennis team this fall, and at the awards program, she received a varsity letter, a Scholar-Athlete Award for outstanding athletic performance and outstanding performance in the classroom. She was named to the Nick Ten All-Conference Team and was chosen as Harlem High School Tennis Team's Most Valuable Player. Congratulations, Tamara. We're very proud of you. Glad you're our student liaison. And this evening, I do have a request to address the board prior to the vote on items this evening. Ken Hodowannick from Willshire Boulevard is here to speak to the board regarding Harlem Road and Victory improvements.
Well, to begin with, I ain't a, I don't talk a whole lot, but I come right down to the point. Harlem Road and Victory is not safe the way it is right now. And I remember when the guy got killed on that cycle. Excuse me. I wonder if any of you guys went to the guy's funeral, because that could have been avoided. And there's been so darn many wrecks down there. I mean, I tell my wife right here, Kathy, don't even go that way. She has to go by the road ranger gas station and then go south. I mean, that is one dangerous intersection. And if we can, you know, I know the guy in the cycle's dead. We can't bring him back. But we all just can't sit on our hands and let this go on. It's just, that is the most dangerous intersection. And another thing, you know, I walk a lot. I walk, I live on 228 Willshire, and I walk over that Bauer Bridge. And these drivers, this is before they get to that intersection, they're going 60, 70 miles an hour, and a good part of them have this right in their face. And you know what that means? They're texting, or online, or doing something. They're talking, paying any attention to what they're doing. And we gotta do something. I mean, you know, I know Harlem Road is a county road, but Victory is not a county road. Victory is our responsibility, and we should be able to drive down Victory without getting killed. And like I said, I ain't a long-winded person, and that's about all I have to say. Let's do something about it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. You're welcome.
And that's all I have, your honor.
Thank you. Next we have the warrant, trustee Erin Wilson.
Good evening, your honor. The A&amp;F Committee met this evening and voted to authorize a warrant totaling $473,367.87. I move to authorize the warrant at this time.
So made. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I think I made the motion.
He seconded.
Oh, okay. Yeah, he seconded. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the bills. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck is absent. Six ayes, no, five ayes, no nays, and one absent.
The bills have been approved. Next on agenda is administrative reports. Been a very busy and productive two weeks for myself. On Thursday, the 9th, I was proud to represent the village of Machesney Park at the annual Field of Honor ceremonies at Loves Park City Hall. The guest speaker was retired Sergeant First Class Rick M. Kolberg, who gave a very inspiring speech. He kept the attention of all the Harlem 5th grade students in attendance. A big thank you for everyone involved in putting on such a moving ceremony for the veterans in our area. I also attended the R.A.E.D.C. Annual Dinner on Wednesday night. The focus this year event was workforce development. Dr. Kevin Fleming was the guest speaker who stressed how to have success in our new economy. On Thursday, the 16th, I attended the ribbon cutting for the new Mims Park located at the corner of Mims Drive and North 2nd Street Service Drive. The project was a collaboration of the Rockford area Realtors Young Professional Network and the village of Machesney Park. The project was done with all private funds. The park has a wiffle ball diamond, a half basketball court, and a picnic table area. I was so excited when Brad Shields brought this idea to my attention shortly after I took office in May. The project was fast-tracked so it could be done, completed this year. This group did a fantastic job with the park, and I'm looking forward to doing other community events with them in the future. On Sunday, I attended the Parks Chamber 20th Annual Light Up the Parks Holiday Parade. There was a record number of entries, and I think there was a record number of people along the parade route also. I was proud to ride on the village float that the Tricky Enterprises decorated all in blue to honor our police officers. Great job, thank you to Lisa and Ike Tricky. I would like to thank all staff and elected officials who attended the parade and help with the village tree cutting, the help with the village tree lighting that followed right after the parade. I want to thank all members from the Firstborn Ministry who provided hot chocolate cookies and plus Carolyn for our tree lighting. A also big thank you goes out to Santa and Mrs. Claus, who made it the long cold trip down from North Pole to come and see the children in our parade and see our tree lighting. And finally, I want to remind everybody that our village is collecting toys for the annual toy drive with North Park Church of Christ. New unwrapped toys can be dropped off at Village Hall Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. During the parade route, there was awards given. The mayor's award was given to North Park Public Water District for the Beauty and Beast theme. The best community group award was Harlem School District. The best business award was Snooks, and the best youth group award was Girl Scout Troop Continuing on with other administrative reports, next would be Tom Green. Do you have a report this evening?
No report tonight, your honor. Thank you.
Next would be village administrator, Tim Savage.
Thank you. I wanted to report that the transition to, away from county inspection services to Loves Park Services is going well. The Community Development Department under Director Richter has done outstanding job during that period. We have an agreement before you tonight for plan review services. The village is now issuing permits under the Village of Machesney Park heading and selling those permits directly at the front desk now, and the county is wrapping up their inspections for permits that were sold by them. Expect that to go about to the end of the year, and then we'll be fully engaged with Loves Park in January for that service. The next item I have is that we're recommending Item A, Ordinance 4217 under the Consent Agenda, be placed under Unfinished Business. We have a small report on that item, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Community Development Director, James Richter.
Thank you, your honor. Very briefly, Mr. Savage and I recently met with the new executive director of Intersect Illinois, which is a privately funded, nonprofit organization geared towards promoting Illinois as a great place to do business, and of course promoting us as the fifth largest economy in the United States. This is kind of a, this was something that was started by Governor Rauner initially. It was kind of an in-house, a quasi-governmental organization, and they've since decided that they want to make it completely separate. We understand that Intersect Illinois will be collecting and gathering leads of potential businesses that would be looking to expand nationwide, so it's good that we met the director and that through our partners with Radec, we'll be able to keep in touch with them. They should be, we hope they'll be a good resource for us to help us with economic development in the Rockford region. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Superintendent of Public Works, Chad Hunter.
No report tonight, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be village engineer, Chris Stopkins.
Thank you, your honor. Pleased to advise that the Illinois 251 Service Drive project is substantially complete. The last of the restoration was placed today. The contractor's wrapping up operations. We'll remove the rest of the traffic control this week, actually tomorrow. Handful of small items left to do out there, move a sign around, replace a mailbox, that sort of thing, but otherwise, they're pretty much wrapped up. Mail delivery has resumed to the permanent mailboxes. The temporary mailbox bank will be removed this Wednesday, so we've reminded folks to make sure that everything is cleaned out before that bank goes down. And that's all I have this evening, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is student liaison, Tamara Hecox.
Thank you, your honor. The biggest thing going on in Harlem right now is our new policy, Alice. This is just a new way our school has decided to handle emergency situations. Last week, all classes ran through this, and it went very well. Also, last week was a fall awards night, as mentioned, and all fall athletes got recognized for their accomplishments. And today and tomorrow is our school blood drive, and there have been a lot of students signing up for that, so that's great. And we only have a two-day week this week, so everyone's really excited, and I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Next is public safety supervisor, Lieutenant Doug Bushman.
Thank you, your honor. The bi-monthly police report covers November 3rd through the 16th, and that time there were 718 calls for service in the village, 211 reports taken, 248 arrests. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be committee and trustee report. Does any trustee have a report this evening? Trustee Kidd.
The Public Improvement and Safety Committee with a negative recommendation sent 72R-17 to the board for December 4th. Also, I would like to thank the Hodowannicket family, I think that's your name. Before the stoplight issue came forward, they warned us about the safety issues. The board did not act very promptly about the warnings. Couple accidents happened, one concerning the death, and then we were able to push forward the light that you suggested. Thank you for not giving up on your goal, and you guys did a great job. Also, I was able to sit at the corner of Victory and Waterview, which is a four-way stop sign. We talked about stop signs on Torreng and Centaur. On Waterview and Victory, the count number during the same timeframe is actually less than Centaur and Torreng, so I hope the staff would reconsider about putting a stop sign in that intersection based off of the information that there's actually less traffic at that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other trustee have a report this evening? Trustee Smith.
Just on behalf of Field Fastener, I was asked to thank all the staff and trustees, elected officials, emergency personnel, and military personnel for attending Field's appreciation luncheon for Veterans Day a couple weeks ago. So on behalf of Bill and Jim and everyone at Field, I just want to say thank you for attending.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else have a report this evening?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
The A&amp;F Committee met this evening and had a positive recommendation to authorize Resolution 70-R-17, that is to approve I.D.O. agreement for the Bauer-Victory traffic signals. Also, Resolution 71-R-17 to commit funds for the Bauer-Victory traffic signals. So some great news there. Also, just from the bottom of my heart, I just want to thank everybody and give you a very happy Thanksgiving that's coming up this week. On behalf of the board, we hope you all have a very bountiful and thankful Thursday that's coming up here real quick. Also, one note, too. I'm just looking at my map here, and I don't know where Waterview intersects with Victory, but I'll just...
Waterview and Wilson, as you were. Waterview and Wilson. I apologize.
All right. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a report this evening? Hearing none, next would be Consent Agenda. Would the staff present all items to be considered on the consent agenda?
Thank you. Item A, Ordinance 4217, has been moved, we'd like to move it to consideration under Unfinished Business. Item B is Ordinance 3317. It grants a special use permit to operate a U-Haul rental at 9924 North 2nd Street, First Reading. Item C, Ordinance 3517, a text amendment to the zoning code. Modifies the sign code for commercial signage along the North 2nd Street Corridor, First Reading. Item D, Ordinance 3817, grants a variance to the rear and side yard setback and lot coverage at 7219 North 2nd Street, First Reading. Item E, Ordinance 4317, authorizing an agreement for the electric aggregation program with independent energy consultants, First Reading. Item F, Resolution 67R-17, a resolution to declare surplus TIF funds in the Illinois Route 251-173 Gateway Tax Incentment Finance District. Item G, Resolution 68R-17, authorization to enter into a consulting services agreement for building plan reviews with Rockford Architects Incorporated. Item H, Resolution 70R-17, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the Bauer-Victory traffic signalization installation. Item I, Resolution 71R-17, resolution to commit funds for the Bauer-Victory traffic signals. Thank you, your honor.
Just want to make sure everybody's clear that Item A, the Ordinance 4217, will be under unfinished business.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any items that trustee would like removed from the consent agenda that we consider Hearing none, the consent agenda has been accepted as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So made. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Consent agenda has been approved. Next, under unfinished business, would be Ordinance 4217, updating building codes. May entertain a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have staff report, please?
So, everyone should have received a memo outlining some rather minor changes to the proposed code change. Originally, when it was drafted, the first reading included the changes that we understood to be included by the consortium of the county, Loves Park and Rockford, that had gotten together to adopt the updated codes with amendments. After further review of that, there were some additional items that needed to be amended, and in discussion with the Harlem Rosco Fire Department, there were a couple items included from them also. Anything else that you want to include in that? Mr. Richter?
Yes, please. These are really minor changes to the document that you saw before and really help us align some of the rules that would be adopted through the amendments with our existing code. A lot of them relate to just making the zoning ordinance provisions and some of those IPMC property maintenance provisions parallel with one another, and so they're rather insignificant. Happy to go over any of the questions you might have. But the list that you have in the memo kind of outlines by bullet point by bullet point each of the different changes that are made.
Your honor, I would like to have a conversation about the fire hydrants. Two houses in my district have decorative flowers, plants that surround the fire hydrants that are above seven inches, according to this in the grass. Would it be wise to put a diameter of no debris around a fire hydrant? I see Mr. Alms is in the, in the audience there, and that way, I don't know, firefighters have trouble keep getting their hoses through debris and that type of stuff when there's a lot of it.
Yeah, we'll be happy to place that on a future committee agenda and even take it up at the staff level to see what might be appropriate. Unrelated to this, of course, these building codes apply to private property the fire hydrants are in right away, but happy to do it.
Yep, since it was there, so thank you.
Any further discussion?
If I might. So what we need is a motion to amend the Ordinance 4217 to incorporate the identified additions, and that would be a sub-motion.
Make a motion to amend to the existing...
Ordinance and incorporate these additions.
Incorporate these additions.
So made.
Motion is second.
And then you can have discussion.
Any discussion so desired. Hearing none, clerk please take roll call.
So this is just on the sub-motion to make these amendments? Thank you.
This is the sub-motion. Trustee Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Did I say Kidd?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four...
That's correct.
Five ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Right, okay. So motion carries, so...
You can have discussion on the main motion as amended.
Now, can we have a, if anybody has a discussion, the main motion is amended? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Motion carries. Next would be under new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 3917 zoning map amendment for R12 Ag at 10830 Miller Lane, First Reading.
So made.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. This is a proposal to rezone property at 10830 Miller Lane from R1 to Agricultural. It is a, about a five-acre lot. The owners of the property had acquired or had entered into a contract to purchase the property under the understanding that it was zoned agriculturally. They found out by closing it was not, but chose to proceed anyway. And as they had contacted the village initially to find out what things they could do relative to growing produce on the property and selling the produce, they had also said, "We'd really like to get ahold of that ag zoning if we could," and so then they proceeded with an application. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a denial of that request, mostly centered around the issues that could be brought about with agricultural zoning and animals and the scents and the sounds that could be associated with having animals on the property. The Planning and Economic Development Committee also made a recommendation to, against the rezone. And amidst all of that, we were able to work with the property owner on a possible home occupation license, which would allow them to grow produce on the property and also sell it, as long as the criteria for the home occupation license, which is, was $10, was upheld. We found that they're able to do that, and they still had asked to see through the application for the rezoning. But we do believe we have, if for some reason the board proceeds, decides not to proceed with approving that, we do have an alternative that would still allow the Millers to do the end use that they would like to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Kidd.
Everything I have read, that it fits our zoning code, that it can be zoned ag, and if that's the wishes of the homeowner and the landowner, because it does meet the criteria, I think we should all vote yes, because it does meet the criteria. And now referred to the purchase of J.C. Penney's. J.C. Penney's had a discussion of about an employer moving in there. I believe it was an indoor storage unit. While talking to Tom Yo, he said that they didn't want that type of business in Machesney Park or close to the Village Hall. And I don't think as a village, we should dictate what somebody can do, what the rules are. So I'll be voting yes, because she fits the criteria, and if we want to change the criteria to something else, so this doesn't happen again, I think we should. Thank you.
Any, trustee Bailey?
I was on the committee on November 6th that this came forward to with the negative recommendation. I will be voting against this because there is another option for her. Instead of having to rezone it, she has other options that she can go forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any discussion? Trustee Sykes.
Thank you, your honor. I'm also going to be voting no, yes, because I just, I don't want to get into the thing of now everybody in our village wants animals. You know, if anybody has, now, that's a subdivision now that's been built up around it, and I know she said she wasn't going to do it, and that's fine, but we have another option for them to grow their produce and sell it. That is great. We're not taking that away from them, but down the road, if they were to move, somebody else could...
But down the road, if they were to move, somebody else comes in, before you know it, you got pigs, you got cows, you got donkeys, and you got everything running around. And I don't think that would be the good thing for the neighborhood. So I will be voting nay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Trustee Kidd.
Uh, can we hear from the applicant? She has anything to say, if she is here?
She addressed during committee, I believe.
She did.
Maybe she has something new she might want to share?
Well, this would be, I, yeah.
Doesn't fit our agenda.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Yeah, we, I know she's talked twice because I was at that meeting myself, too. And I, I think at this point, we should not, you know, allow type of thing, go with the protocol that we got here.
I just want to make sure that she, if she has nothing new, that she's not able to bring it up based off of your recommendation. Because sometimes they have new evidence.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we, we, she's already spoke twice, I know, for a fact, so.
No new evidence. Thank you.
Hearing, anybody else have any other further discussion?
Your Honor.
Uh, yes.
I just want to point out that we've had two committees that have looked over this diligently and both of those committees have given us a negative recommendation. So based on those committees, if they're doing their proper job and they're looking over this information, I will be going with what they've decided for us, which is nay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing?
Your Honor, I just wanted to address the, the comment that was made by trustee Kidd that you wanted to avoid this not happening again. And I want to make clear to everybody that there were no mistakes on the part of the village. There were, there was nothing in error here. This is simply a zoning request that has come forward. The ordinance is clear on what qualifies for, for ag zoning, what does not. That, that's true. But I, I just don't think that anything happened that caused an error or for this situation to be the way it is. It's just a zoning request. The comprehensive plan that was adopted by the village that, that lays out broad plans for the village and is a guiding document for these types of zoning requests does identify this area as residential and it does not identify it as ag. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kidd.
Sure, Your Honor, thank you. Unfortunately, when somebody new comes to the village board and is unfamiliar with the rules and regulations on all our codes and their understanding on how the process works, sometimes as they go on with the process, they develop more information and can share more information with the village board for the homeowner to sway somebody's mind. In my opinion, that if it fits the rules and regulations and if she does have something new that she would like to share, I just think she should be able to share it. And unfortunately, her request was denied. Thank you.
Hearing any further discussion?
Your Honor. Nope, I'm sorry. I did speak with the homeowner last week. Manny and I talked back and forth and I made myself available for any questions or comments to her. And I can say that I'm confident that the home occupation permit will satisfy what she wants. I typically agree with trustee Kidd in that I want to see homeowners be able to do what they want to do with their properties. But, you know, the comprehensive plan does outline what we're looking for in that area. I believe in that comprehensive plan. After speaking with the homeowner, I feel that her goals will be satisfied with the home occupation permit. So whereas I want to side with her, I also will be voting nay because I feel we can accomplish this through the home occupation permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Bailey.
Nay.
Sykes.
Nay.
Smith.
Nay.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Nay.
Mayor Johnson.
Nay.
One aye, five nays, and one absent. Motion is defeated and this will not move on.
Okay, thank you. Next would be public comment. Is anyone in the audience who would like to address the board for the good of the Seeing none, next would be adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All there in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.